We're still missing Councilmember Blair. Anybody heard from him tonight, today?
He's probably putting the finishing touches on his paperwork.
We'll give us just a minute.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, thank you. I have major problems with my computer.
Well, it looks like you got them under control because we can hear you and see you just fine.
Groovy.
All right, folks, we're gonna go ahead since most of us, oh, there's Mr. Blair. Hey, James, can you hear us okay?
Yep.
Excellent, all right. Uh, council, since we're all accounted for, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of the City Council of Yelm, Washington to order at December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, we will do it by our usual tradition of doing a salute to the flag. If you'll all please look at your screen for our official flag. And join in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, council. Will the city clerk, the Honorable Lori Lucas, take the roll, please?
Councilmember James Blair?
Here.
Councilmember Molly Carmody?
Here.
Councilmember EJ Curry?
Here.
Councilmember Ted Stillwell?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Wood?
Here and accounted for.
Councilmember Joan DePinto?
Here.
Councilmember Terry Kaminsky?
Here.
Mayor JW Foster?
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum and we're all connected as we should be, very good. Uh, we also have some attendees from the public tonight, uh, as attendees. And so just keep that in mind, and we do have our, it should be streaming by now. So, uh, we'll start off with our usual agenda approval, which you should have had in your packet.
Mayor?
I, is that, is that Councilmember Blair saying something?
Yeah, um, I'd like to motion to amend the agenda, including a discussion regarding possible resolution about local economy and COVID-19.
Motion to amend the agenda to speak about a possible resolution?
Yes.
We'll need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Uh, because of, uh, the video connection, I'm gonna go down, uh, and ask for a roll call vote, please. So, notes here. Uh, on the motion to amend the agenda to include a discussion about a possible resolution about the economy, how do you vote, Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Councilmember Carmody?
Aye.
Councilmember Curry?
Nay.
Councilmember Stillwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Councilmember DePinto?
Aye.
And Councilmember Kaminsky?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, we'll add that under, uh, new business B. Are there any other recommended, uh, changes to the agenda? I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Again.
Any other, well, there's no other discussion or we already had that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have an agenda approval. So now, Ms. Perry, if you would unmute your video, if you can. There you are. So, folks, this is that great time of month when we get to celebrate one of our awesome students. Uh, the Yelm Community Schools, the Rotary Club of Yelm, the City of Yelm, and many of our business partners all come together to, uh, make the difficult decision of which awesome student we get to honor uh, on a monthly basis. Uh, and this is no exception. I'm gonna, gonna read this, this is what we get from the school, this is how Olivia was nominated. "We're excited to announce our November twenty twenty Student of the Month, Olivia Perry. Olivia has a heart of service and is always looking to serve others. She is involved with numerous organizations both in and out of school. Currently serving as the YHS FFA Secretary, Olivia is responsible for taking minutes of their meetings, and she also works on committees such as Adopt a Family. She's been ahead of that committee for three years, the past two of which they've had record collection numbers. Olivia also serves in other ways through her church. She volunteers in the daycare during service and has taught some of the younger Sunday School classes. She's also a summer camp leader. In addition to being an outstanding community member, Olivia is also an excellent student. An Honor Society member, she's in running start with Clover Park and still attends classes at the high school to stay connected. She's going to be a pilot and has already been doing practice flights. She's maintained excellent grades throughout all of high school, all the while pouring herself into her volunteer activities. Olivia also has a competitive side and loves to compete on the volleyball court as well as in FFA competitions. Olivia has played on the high school and club volleyball teams for all four years of high school, except for this COVID year. In FFA, she has excelled in her two contest sales and nursery landscape design. The last two years, their nursery landscape team has taken second place in the state. This is all due to her constant effort and study skills. She'll compete this spring again for another shot at winning first and going to nationals. We're proud of Olivia and excited for her future. The Rotary Club of Yelm, along with our business partners in the City of Yelm, wish you all the best, Olivia." Now, would you like to say something? You don't have to sing the song.
Uh, I just wanna say thank you to Yelm Rotary Club and all the local businesses that, um, accepted my nomination and picked me to represent them this month. And I'm really honored and as I learn more about what the Rotary Club did, I was really impressed in what they do with the community. And so, thank you.
Absolutely, well, we're all very proud of you and wish you well. And if we have somebody buzzing Yelm in the future, we'll kind of look up and think it might be wag the wings a little bit, so we know it's you, will ya? Okay, I wanna say, um, I just wanna call out the different organizations. Usually, uh, we would have a plaque to, uh, to show to you, you'll get that later. Uh, because we moved this up, uh, a week early, we weren't able to get that done in time. But you got a nice plaque and a certificate. Uh, and then you get awards from Ken McCullough, American Family Insurance, The Masonry Cafe, Olympia Federal Savings, Edward Jones Financial Advisor Pam Ferris, Pizzeria La Giotana, The Ship Lap Shop, Walmart of Yelm, the Yelm Food Co-op, and Grocery Outlet. So enjoy all those and thanks for tuning in tonight. And you're welcome to stay and watch the, the council meeting, but we also understand that you're a busy person and have schools and stuff to do. So, thanks for being with us, Olivia. Okay, folks, we will, uh, move on to the consent agenda, which we don't have any of, so that was easy. Uh, we'll go on to new business, which is six A is the December twenty twenty amendment of the twenty nineteen twenty biennial budget, resolution six oh two, and we'll have Michael Graham kick that up. Gotta unmute yourself, sir. Thank you, and, and if you would like, I understand the agenda was just amended and now sandwiches between the two budget items that are there. If, if you want, the budget items kind of go hand in hand with the twenty and then the twenty-one, twenty-two. If you want, I'd be glad to yield the time, uh, so that you guys could discuss the ordinance first and then roll right into the two action items for the budget. I just wanted to put that out there for your consideration. I'm glad to have those switched around if it would please you all.
Yeah, I would want to, let's do all the budget stuff together, for sure.
Now you're on, yeah. I know, following you. Without objection from any of the council members, we'll flip those two items on the agenda. Seeing no objection, uh, then we'll move into six B, which is now six A. Getting all that, Lori? And, um, what, what we have here is, uh, the agenda item is to discuss a possible resolution about, uh, the local economy, and this was brought up by Mr. Blair, so if you wanna kick off this conversation?
Oh, we're gonna do that first?
Yeah.
Okay, um, from the last meeting, I, I, I told you all, I work on getting something written up. Um, unfortunately, over the weekend, I was crazy busy. Um, so I called Councilmember DePinto and asked him to, to help out with getting something drafted up. And I believe you all should have seen the email just before this meeting, if you haven't seen that, you can pull that up. Um, but I'll let Joe, do you want to go through it yourself?
Yeah, I can do that. Um, I, shall I just read through it then? That would, um, please the, the council? Nope.
I don't suppose you have a way to share your screen?
Um, I could probably do that, actually.
It'd be helpful to, uh, people who are viewing this and were looking at the recording, if we could have something to look at.
Sure. See if I can put that up, just give me a second, I wasn't prepared to do that. Do I have to, I think I have to have authorization on this, don't I? Or the ability to share?
All the panelists can share, you should just be able to click the button.
Okay. Does anyone see that?
Good.
There we go.
All right, um, shall I read through it as, as we do this, as I share it?
Yes.
"A resolution of the City of Yelm, Washington, declaring disagreement, frustration, and proclamation twenty dash five, twenty-five point eight, and seeks COVID-19 information and data relevant to the City of Yelm. Whereas the City of Yelm, Washington, the city is a code city under the laws of the City of Washington, and whereas pursuant to chapter thirty-five, eight point one-one point zero-two-zero RCW, the city is authorized to regulate the city's local or municipal affairs appropriate to the good governance of the city. And whereas, on November fifteenth, twenty twenty, Governor Jay Inslee issued proclamation twenty dash five point eight, limiting the operation, force, and closure of businesses through at least December fourteenth, twenty twenty. And whereas, on December tenth, twenty twenty, Governor Jay Inslee extended proclamation twenty twenty dash twenty-five along the statewide restrictions imposed on November seventeenth to January fourth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas, it is believed that the number of COVID cases in the City of Yelm are minimal compared to larger cities throughout the State of Washington. And whereas, limiting the operations of and forcing the closure of businesses in the City of Yelm may have adverse consequences to the city's economy. And whereas, small businesses in Yelm are suffering economically more intensely than the larger national businesses in Yelm, excuse me, in the city. And whereas, the city has not been presented with any direct evidence that an emergency exists within the City of Yelm. And whereas, the city, excuse me, getting ahead of myself. Whereas, the council desires to act in a reasonable, logical, and fact-based manner with due regard for the interests of its constituency. And whereas, the State of, the Washington State Department of Health, DOH, continues to make progress with their COVID-19 vaccine distribute, distribution, planning efforts. And whereas, approximately two hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-two thousand doses the FDA-approved Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine will be delivered to Washington State by the end of December. Now, for the City of, City Council of City of Yelm, Washington, does ordain as follows. An emergency exists which requires immediate action necessary for the preservation of public health and safety, public property, and public peace. The City of Yelm do attempt, seek all information, data concerning COVID-19 within the jurisdictional limits of Yelm and/or the nine-eight-five-nine-seven zip code in an effort to obtain relevant information and data so the City Council may be equipped to make a, make a reasonable, logical, and fact-based decisions regarding city policy surrounding the economy. The City of Yelm requests that Governor Jay Inslee reconsider's proclamation twenty dash five, twenty-five point eight and allow all businesses that are mitigating public risk to COVID-19 exposure by utilizing CDC-recommended health and safety precautions and social distancing and mask wearing to open." Sorry for that speed reading. Made a few errors there. But I, you should all have this document as well, the mayor and the city administrator too.
All right, council, you have, um, you, you've had just a minute to see this, um, maybe you've had ten minutes to take a look at it. Uh, we can entertain discussion here. I'll watch for the hands, since I can see you all on the side of the screen, and I'll start with Councilmember Carmody.
Yeah, um, I, the only thing, I love this, thank you so much. The only thing that I would change would be, um, the nine-eight-five-nine-seven zip code, because that does affect a lot of the county. There's a lot of people with that zip code that are like out in Lakewood, I mean, not Lakewood, um, like Lake Lawrence and Clearwood, um, and other places that aren't inside the City of Yelm. So I would remove that language and just say within the city limits, because we have no effect on anything outward, so why even mention it? That would be my only change.
Councilmember DePinto?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Councilmember, or, just, just speaking to that point, um, I, I, and this is just from what I believe that they, the, um, Washington, or the Washington Department of Health and also the Dershowitz County Department of Health categorize it by, uh, zip code, not actually by city boundaries. I, I'm not a hundred percent on that. Um, if anyone knows more on that, though, but if it, if it isn't included, I agree a hundred percent. That was just the only reason that I added that part.
They do not break it down by municipality, it's just by the nine-eight-five-nine-seven zip code.
Okay, I mean, you know, whatever we decide, um, you know, if we declare this for, for us, it's only gonna affect us anyway. So I guess leaving it in doesn't mean a big difference.
Uh, Councilmember Kaminsky?
Um, the only part I wasn't sure about was mentioning public peace. Is that relevant, because we do have public peace? And also, if you could put a timeframe, like immediate attention, we don't want this six months from now, we want it now.
Uh, can you make those edits as, uh, people suggest them, Joe?
And was this taken, this was taken off the Mossy Rock, um, the way they did it, their format, Joe?
Correct, I, I made a few edits, um, there was a little, um, intransparency, there was a little more, um, I don't wanna say rough around the edges, but a little more direct, um, on some of them, a little further than I, I thought we needed to go to, but, um,
Because I'm, they're, they're already, um, like combating the restrictions, they're already moving ahead and doing all the protesting about it.
And, and one other point I wanna make was that-
We're asking permission in a more legal way, right?
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't an ordinance like they did, so it's a little, little softer. It's not, um, I guess it doesn't have as much teeth. It, I, I don't think an ordinance would have been appropriate, in, just in my opinion. Um, either this or a letter of the same language, I think, would be adequate, but that's just my two cents on it.
Any other comments or discussion?
We don't really need to seek the information, because we have the data already, although that website is now saying that, that their numbers aren't even accurate, is what I was reading today.
I just wanna, so with the COVID numbers, are you talking about the, the doses of FDA-approved Pfizer?
No, I'm talking about the cases. Today, they're saying that their cases are, uh, they found eleven hundred duplicates of positive cases in their numbers. If you look, it's right on their website, so that their, their numbers are incomplete. So I guess we could seek information, but the information is there, I just don't know if it's accurate.
What was the other, um, edit you wanted to make?
Like in an effort to seek relevant information and data, so we can be equipped to make a reasonable decision, well, we have data. We don't need to-
How would I make that edit, just?
Hmm, we will acknowledge the data that we have in our area.
I would say something along the lines that the data representative for this area doesn't seem to justify what's been done so far, as far as the, the businesses that have been closed. And also, it's, it's not equitable, or, I don't know if that's the correct terminology. Uh, why we have these smaller businesses shut down, but we can, still got five hundred people in Walmart at a time. Um, I, I'm not sure how that would be worded.
James, that would be a totally separate paragraph. And that has really, I mean, you know, what, what the paragraph that, that Terry's talking about changing is, uh, the City of Yelm will immediately attempt to seek all information and data concerning COVID-19. I would just say, I mean, since we already are, we already are looking for this, we don't even need to say that we're doing it. Just say that the City of Yelm will, um, you know-
Will reference?
Will continue, will continue to research data. Will continue to research data concerning.
Right here after this, after the code, or?
No, right after the City of Yelm will. The City of Yelm will continue to research data, or continue to research information. And then get rid of, immediately, attempt to seek all information.
See, go. Seek all of it.
The, the, yeah, the City of Yelm will continue to research information and data, there you go. I mean, that, that means, you know, we, we're already doing the research, we're just gonna continue to do it. If James wants to add something else in about Walmart, it doesn't belong in this paragraph.
Yep, thank you, Molly, for that. And maybe at the very, very end, we could just put time is of the essence? No, at the very, yeah.
At the very end?
Yeah.
Just time is of the essence?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any other suggestions?
Councilmember Stillwell?
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanna, uh, be clear that we're just simply making a proclamation in this and asking the governor to consider our area uh, as something different than the, uh, the, uh, what he's done with the rest of the state, is that correct?
I believe that was the intent, um, I, I don't know if that was the rest of the council's attempt, intent.
That's, that's how I read it, I mean, that's, that's my take, I like it. Um, I, I think we probably should have it, I know it's, it'll cost money, but it probably should be reviewed real quick. Uh, just get a quick legal review to be sure we're not creating issues for us.
It has no standing in law, uh, Tad, we don't need to fear any legal repercussions from this unless, uh, based on this opinion from the council of a local business owner took this as, uh, a legal go-ahead for them to do something against the state order, uh, they could find us liable for leading them down that path. I don't think that's gonna happen, but that's the, that's what you set yourself up for, for doing with this. Uh, the only other comment I'll have is that, uh, this goes against your no surprises rule. Trying to, to edit something and act on it at a council meeting with no prior, um, ability to look at or have it reviewed, um, is challenging at best, but it does help you make a statement and, uh, it does, it, it provides you with an action item that, again, should not have any legal ramifications, so, uh, please continue your discussion. Councilmember DePinto?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do wanna point out that earlier this year, we did just that with the COVID funding, which was not on the agenda. It was a agenda item that was added, I believe by, it was, it was by the, um, General Government Committee, and we literally voted on it and discussed it, and, uh, without any, we didn't even have this on the screen, you know, to discuss. So we have done this in the past.
Okay. Council, do you have any other edits or would you, I mean, you, you have the opt, two options here, council. You can, uh, pass or not pass this resolution. If you don't pass the resolution, you could still take all the content from it and put it into a letter form, which is what honestly we were expecting, uh, from the last meeting. Uh, we all thought we would see a letter that we could all sign onto, and I was willing to sign onto that after an opportunity to fully, um, peruse it. Uh, so those are your two choices, unless there's other amendments that wanted to be made. Uh, you have a motion and a second to consider this, yes, Councilmember DePinto?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be open if the council so chose to make this a letter rather than a resolution. I, I think the impact would fairly be the same, but, um, it's the council's call.
Can we do both?
Sure.
I think the resolution has a little bit more, I mean, even though there's no legal weight, it's not, uh, this isn't something saying, hey, Yelm is open, do what you want. Um, it looks a little more official to me than just a letter. Uh, but that doesn't mean we couldn't also put this into a letter form, send it around to the other cities and see if anyone else wants to jump in. We could do both.
Yeah, I think we should do both.
So, um, the motion that was on the floor before was just to add this to the agenda, my, my mistake. So we need a motion to, um, accept this resolution, uh, as it stands, and then you could also add on to that, um, and a letter to follow, or some words to that effect. Councilmember DePinto?
Thank you, Mayor, um, just so the council kind of understands the different levels of this. Um, I, and you might already know it, but I just wanna say, like, ordinances, which is, um, what this is kind of modeled after in ordinance, um, i- is a lot more serious, it's, um, has legal, um, legal, um, binding, uh, it's legal, legally binding for us, you know, it's, it, it's very serious if we should get sued for litigation, with litigation, all that. But, um, the second exit is a resolution where it's still a formal process. Um, and the least, um, powerful, I guess, is a letter, which doesn't bear too much, uh, weight besides, uh, kind of a strong, um, you know, ask. And which, I mean, still a powerful in itself, but, again, I'm, I would be either the letter or the resolution.
Councilmember Stillwell?
Yeah, I would, uh, I'd like to do this in letter format and then, uh, possibly have more discussion on the proclamation at a, at the next meeting, perhaps, that would be, then we can all sign this, if we want to. Uh, and, uh, and then move forward with the official proclamation discussion, uh, that would be my preference.
Uh, Councilmember Carmody?
Um, yeah, while I appreciate what, what Tad is saying, I mean, it's already December fifteenth, and, you know, the next restriction is hopefully closing on January fourth. I mean, that's only three weeks from now, maybe, I think that we should either do it today or just not do it at all. You know, I don't think there's much point in waiting another two weeks to do this.
Councilmember Blair?
I move to approve this resolution, uh, and since we don't have a number attached to it yet, I'll leave that blank.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the resolution as it has been edited during the discussion. Uh, and now further discussion, Councilmember DePinto?
Thank you, and I, I just wanna bring back to the point that we're not doing this just to, just to make the news here. We're doing this to try and help our businesses in Yelm. I mean, businesses like the bowling alley that's closed, businesses like our bars that are reduced capacity. These, these are people that we're doing it for, we're not doing this to, to grandstand or anything. This is, we're trying to have the governor actually take us seriously. In enough cities and state, or states, enough cities, um, Washington, you know, come together, enough council, council members and elected officials are demanding this, at, at some point, it, it is gonna matter, so that was just my two cents on it.
Councilmember Blair?
I just wanted to add also, like, as we said before, I would like to also convert this into a letter format that we could send around to the other, the other cities and hopefully get other people to sign on and have that delivered directly to the, the governor as well.
You can certainly do that after the fact and add this as a, uh, an attachment, and then, uh, all the council members that you'd like to have sign it can do that, um, and then you can send that out. Councilmember Curry?
I'm gonna support this, but I would really appreciate it if we could get the resolutions, letters, like we are supposed to, following our protocol manual, so we have time to look them over.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor, are you all ready to vote? We'll do a roll call on the motion to approve this resolution. Uh, how do you vote? How do you vote? Councilmember Blair.
Yes.
Councilmember Carmody.
Aye.
Councilmember Curry.
Aye.
Councilmember Stilwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood. He may be on a delivery. Councilmember DePino.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaminsky.
Aye.
The motion carries if councilmember Wood is unable to connect with us right now, who certainly has the opportunity to sign on to the resolution after the fact. I will consider it an extension for the purposes of recording the meeting, however. Motion passes. Councilmember Kaminsky.
Does anybody know how long something like this would take to get to the governor and to get a response? Do we have any idea?
You want to drive it up there?
I will.
Well, hold on. The resolution will be printed up by our city clerk on official resolution paper. So so it looks correct, and then you'll have to come in and put your signatures to it. And by the way, while you're at it. Joe, Tad, and Molly, you still haven't signed the vouchers from last meeting. So you can sign two birds with one pen. And come on in and sign that thing, and then, yeah, you can literally hand carry it down to the Capitol, or you could put it in the mail. And they would get it in two to seven shipping days. Councilmember Pino.
Just want to say, it it's unlikely we'll get actual direct response from the governor. That's what we're hoping for, but someone from established might get back to us. Being that it's near Christmas time, maybe before the end of the year, maybe if we're lucky, my thoughts.
We have the most direct mailing address available, and Mr. Graham knows how to put attention to the right person on there, so. We can facilitate the delivery of this to the governor's office. Unless, Terry, you want to just walk it down there. You're welcome to do that as well.
I would love to walk it down there. I need a bodyguard because last weekend I happened to be in Olympia and I got it, my car was attacked. By an Antifa protester walking down the street, so I'm just a little nervous. So I need James and Joe to go with me. I'll do it, though.
I'm glad you're okay. So you all can make that decision. Lori. Do you need two days to do that, or is this something that you can accomplish tomorrow? I know you have a lot of other work to do.
Well, can somebody send it to me via email, and then I can assign it a number and have it printed out tomorrow?
So by by and tomorrow afternoon, you think it would be ready? And how about this, Lori? Just send out an email to the council members when it's available for signature.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you. So we'll move back now to new business, which is now be the. Ordinance. Resolution six oh two regarding the twenty nineteen twenty twenty biennial budget amendment. Michael?
There we go. Now we're up and running. Can everyone see the screen and hear me okay? Perfect. All right. Well, counsel, we're just going to go quickly over the information that was in your packet. This is part of. Our our practice of doing routine things routinely. As you know, in resolution six oh two, there was a typo in the heading, and in resolution six oh two. That's when you establish the regular cadence for reviewing and amending the budget each quarter. This is the the last quarter to adopt the the revisions to the budget. It's necessary to do before we close out the year. Which will happen in December and January. We'll get the final numbers of the end of the biennium. Around end of January, beginning of February. And then we'll go back into our quarterly revision update processes, as you're well aware from the adoption. So so before you is. The twenty nineteen twenty twenty biennial budget amendment. This is the December update, and it's ordinance number ten seventy two. And the recommendation is that you move to adopt this as presented. Just for context, all the information's in your packet, and I have it up here on the screen for for those that are. Viewing this from home and and watching it as a visitor. But this is, these are minor technical adjustments. There were some errors, typos. And some monies that needed to be moved around for various accounts. It it is technically just housekeeping. And as you see in the. In the information that was presented, you know, as far as our October report, which has been closed out, the budget positions. Everything is under what was budgeted. So we're in a positive position. We continue to maintain. Good controls of the budgeted accounts and funds that exist. And the the amendments are accounted for here in that current position, both here's the ordinance. And the summary document here in appendix A. So with that, counsel, I will leave it to you to. Consider this for action and adoption as part of the quarterly budget budget amendment process.
I move to approve. Is it one oh seven two as presented?
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Councilmember Wood, are you connected? We will consider councilmember Wood's extension from this vote and motion passes. Michael will now lead us through the next agenda item. Hold on a second. Old Business, which is the twenty twenty one twenty twenty two biennial budget, ordinance number ten seventy one.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. Can everyone see this? Okay, as I share a PowerPoint presentation? Just going to walk through. I know you guys have heard this at nauseam as we've been diving into this since October. I just want to hit some of the high points as you consider this for adoption and action tonight. I know we had to have a special meeting and appreciate your patience in doing so. So first, it's important just to remember where we've been. I know that you and and everyone that's been joining us in the journey from from the public. Has been going along with us from the rollout of the mayor's preliminary budget that happened. We had public hearings on the revenue, we had public hearings on the budget ordinance. The finance committee really appreciate their work as always. They've delved in and deliberated on so many aspects of this. They've considered all the amendments that the council has put forth and 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 come up with recommendations back to all of you. So. We had another meeting last night to go through the details of of the budget, which has been included in your packet and available for you to review, but just. I know this is a special meeting, and I know that you all expected to have this done last meeting, and we're all chomping at the bit to get ready for Christmas and the holidays. So just appreciate your indulgence. Just to revisit the general fund budget. The revenue, as we've talked about, is something that is is less than our expenditures, and this is, this is obviously a a concern. It's not sustainable, but it's something to be mindful of. We're in an okay position. And as as we've talked about before, our revenue estimates for the biennium are conservative. Especially considering the the economic impacts of COVID nineteen. Looking beyond the general fund to the total budget, revenue is around seventy two point six, and the expenditures are around eighty point two million. So again, expenditures are over our revenue that we're bringing in. You've seen this graph since the mayor's budget has been presented out, and this is a a real factor as we look not only at the current biennium. But the longer term horizon, which is what our financial policies encourage us to do. Thank you again, counsel, for adopting those policies. And as we, as we look to the future, the expenses are continued to be above the revenues, which is why. We have to continue to be conservative in the way that we approach our budgeting, conservative in the way that we approach our revenue estimates. And continue to, as you just heard, when you looked at the nineteen twenty budget snapshot, continue to rein in the expenses. And and not spend to that budget amount, as our department directors and departments have been doing a really good job of. The other thing that I want to make sure that everyone is mindful of is our reserves. When you look at the total city reserves and the ending fund balance for twenty twenty two, as you look to adopt this budget. The reserves and ending fund balance are about thirteen million dollars. And just just to make sure that everyone knows the importance of this. You know, having and establishing reserves is is a long practice of budgeting. Counsel has done a really good job, at least since since I've been here, of beefing those up and establishing those reserves, the cumulative reserve fund. And making sure that those have the appropriate amounts in there. And anyway, we we are in a good position to adopt the budget. Even though our our revenues are not as great as our expenses are coming in. As you know, we, as we talked about at our finance committee meeting last night and throughout this process. The state RCW's revised code of Washington require the city to adopt a budget by the end of the year. The council finance committee met last night, and they recommend the adoption of the twenty one twenty two budget as proposed and amended by council. I also wanted to put in this presentation, and and obviously the finance committee can can speak for itself, but I just wanted to put in because this is a real fine point that they emphasized. They understand that the budget is balanced, but it's short of the adopted minimum general fund reserve policy that has been established, which is fifteen percent. And that amount there is is before you a hundred and seventy two thousand. As a part of that, the finance committee will use the ending fund balance to create a balanced budget, which is before you. But wants to make sure that everyone knows, we understand this is the exception and not the rule. You have a reserve and we're using it due to extraordinary times. You have ending fund balance, which is actually what's being used. For these extraordinary times, and the finance committee plans to hit the ground running as soon as we close out the year, which we'll do in January. Early February, as I mentioned. We'll look at what the impacts of the other budget that's or the other contract that's being negotiated with the unions, which is with the Teamsters right now. Once they have those two data points, they're going to hit the ground running and be meeting. Again, I think they have two meetings scheduled already in January. To look at what the what the year end is, what the impacts of that union negotiation, which that contract will come back before you, counsel. And then we'll we'll work together to make abundments, just like we did in your previous action at that Q one timeframe. Around the end of February. So those are the next steps, and that's the precision perspective of the finance committee. And and that's the position of staff, and the the recommendation is that you adopt the twenty one twenty two budget. Which I know you have spent a lot of time going through at nauseam, but this is the last formality to meet the the standard for the RCW. Before you dive into it again come February. So the motion before you is to adopt the budget as amended and and presented by council. So with that, counsel, I'll hand it to you.
Councilmember Carmody.
Yeah, I I just wanted to to add to what Michael was saying. The city, the the finance committee, we met. Yesterday for for a couple of hours. We were a little dissatisfied with the final. The final budget as proposed because it does dip into the emergency reserve funds that we established several years ago. Without the final numbers from even the public work salary negotiations even included. So we wanted to make sure that everybody understands that this these reserve funds are for emergencies only. And not to be used for things like staff raises, even in emergency years. To tap into it now sets a dangerous precedent. It'll be that much easier to use in the future. And that's something that we don't want to start doing right now. We want to, we want to keep it safe. Recognizing that all departments and all personnel are considered equal by the council. And that no department shall be shall be deemed more important than any other. We ask that a department asks, request and request, if they throw the budget into the revenue into the reserve zone. Then that department is asked to reduce its own line items so that it doesn't derail the entire budget. As opposed to asking other departments to decrease their own budget. So if you are asking for raises for your own department staff. You need to be responsible for decreasing your own budget elsewhere. It's only fair, other departments can't be asked to shoulder the burden of one department versus others. The finance, we were very close to actually voting no on the entire budget. And requesting that the rest of council vote no as well, but we do recognize that we have to pass a budget by the end of the year. With that being said, we do recommend that council vote yes tonight on the proposed budget. With the expectations that A, we've settled all salary requests from all departments by the end of the year. B, we've received updated twenty twenty numbers by the end of January. And C, all departments are need to work together to balance their internal budgets to prevent the entire general fund budget from tapping into the reserve fund. And D, an updated or amended budget reflecting items A, B, and C be presented to council no later. Than the first council meeting in February. That's our recommendation. Thank you.
Councilmember Carmody, would you like to make that recommendation in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we we recommend the following. Or recommend what I just said, and I can write this all down for you and email it to. To Lori, so that she can get it all typed up. But put it all amend the. Budget with those recommendations in mind.
I I don't feel that's a clear enough motion for the council to pass on.
No, I know, I know. All right. I move that we approve. The twenty twenty one twenty twenty two budget with the attached recommendations in mind.
I need a second. Councilmember Kaminsky seconded, and now is there further discussion? Councilmember Blair, if you could come on screen, it would be helpful, and in fact, we're supposed to be doing that. I see that your hand is up, but it's a lot easier to see you when you're visible. And now you you have the floor.
Okay, sorry, I didn't realize the camera was off. I wanted to add on to what councilmember Carmody said, and everything she said is right. Just but my own words is. I'm going to vote yes simply because we have to pass a budget before the end of the year. But I want everyone to be aware that there are going to be major changes in February. Especially once the the Teamsters contract is done and we have, we know what that impact is going to be. There there are going to be, there there there's going to have to be a lot of cuts that come on that budget update in February, just so everyone knows.
Any other discussion? You have a motion and a second to approve the twenty one twenty two biennial budget. Ordinance number ten seventy one with the recommendations from the finance committee, which will be written down by councilmember Carmody. And sent to the clerk for. Addition to this in the record. On the matter of this motion, then, councilmember Blair, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Carmody.
Yes.
Councilmember Curry.
Yes.
Councilmember Stilwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember DePinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaminsky.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel and finance committee in particular, and Sandy Hines. And Heidi McDonald and and council member, sorry, Michael, they called you mayor last. Now you're back a council member. I don't know what you are, but you're great. Thank you, everybody, for your work on this and your commitment to continue working on. The budget as per the recommendation from the finance committee in the first quarter.
Point of order.
Go ahead, councilmember DePino.
That was a vote for the amendment, not the actual budget.
No, that was a vote for the motion that councilmember Carmody made, which was to approve the budget by resolution. Number with the description of the amendments as she noted in her preamble.
You cannot add an amendment without, you cannot pass an actual budget without the amendment, so that wasn't an amendment then. You have to amend it.
It was not an amendment. It was a clear recommendation coming from the finance committee as an expectation. But the motion in its essence was to approve the budget. Ordinance number ten seventy one. And seconded and discussed and unanimously voted in favor of including by yourself.
I would like to change my vote then because I don't believe that was clear. I was going to vote against that budget for different reasons. I thought we were ending discussion on the vote. An amendment that councilmember Carmody had made when he was seconded.
You're 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 welcome to remove your vote from this, but if you read back the tape, it was very clearly. Said that this motion was in favor of ordinance ten seventy one, the biennial budget. Are you removing your I vote from the last vote?
If it was a final passage of the. If it was a final passage of the budget, yes, I am.
Then let the record. I'm not exactly sure of the Roberts Rule of Order on this one, but your intent is quite clear, and so the record will show that you vote no on Resolution 1071, the biennial budget. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I didn't know that discussion was over on that. I didn't think that it was called for on that. My apologies for the rest of council that clearly didn't think the same way I did. So my apologies for that.
The, the motion still passes. We have a biennial budget. And so thank you again, counsel, for all your work on this. It's an important, it's the most important thing that we do as a team, and this really does take the entire Yelm team to get this done. And, and it never stops. This is a snapshot in time, and we, the cameras are still rolling. And 2021 is going to be a very interesting year as we have a lot of changes coming as far as revenues and expenditures. And then 22 as well. So at the end of 2022, this should all balance out through a series of cuts as described and program changes and whatever it takes necessary, and hopefully our revenues will come up above those expenditures again, and we can roll forward into happy land, which is Yelm. All right. Do we have no old, no other old business, but I do want to take a moment here because in our in our zeal to get on to the budget talks, I forgot a rather major, important part of our agenda. Thank you. Thank you, nobody for correcting me. We skipped right over public comment. We do have a couple of people who are attendees, and so I'll ask them now if every, any member of the public wishes to address the council on any item that is not already on the agenda this evening. I'll allow you all to talk. So you could just talk if you have anything that you'd like to address council on. Okay, hearing that, then we will get back into our agenda, which is department updates. And we'll just do kind of a quick rundown since this is a special meeting. There really shouldn't be a whole lot more, but go ahead, Michael. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to recap every outcome that happened in every month and everything that was done by each program. If we could just go month by month summary. I muted you. I told you I would do that. Go ahead. That's the update you wanted me to give right there. And that concludes my update. No, in all seriousness, I just want to take about two hours and just walk through the year of every accomplishment that was made. It shouldn't take that long, maybe just maybe an hour and a half at the most. But just really to thank all of you, thank the staff one by one, give examples and accolades of every individual. No, there's, there's actually one person I really want to give a special appreciation for, and that's Sandy Hines for joining us tonight. As you all know, this was, this was Heidi's first year doing the budget. And, you know, you all gave feedback. She, she struggled at times, and it's, it's a big undertaking to come in and take on your first municipal budget. And, you know, we took every precaution and we brought in Sandy, who was really helpful to help culture it up and make sure that the finances were accurate and accounted for, and she navigated that big process, you know, now from, you know, start to end. And, you know, we wish Heidi could be here with us tonight. But I just wanted to acknowledge Sandy's work and effort behind the scenes to technically support the Finance Committee, support you, and most importantly, support Heidi. We couldn't have gotten through this without her. So Heidi, Sandy, thank you. And I know if Heidi was here, she'd say thank you too. The other thing I just wanted to touch on real quick is as, as we go into the new year, I know there's a lot of things to be excited for, and we'll send out the, the agenda post-Christmas. But you've got the, the animal control contract that Cody has briefed you on that we're going to do with Thurston County Animal Control Services. There's the legal contract addendum that the Finance Committee will bring forward at the first meeting of the year. And there's also a couple of infrastructure contracts to improvements that we're going to be making that'll also come at your first and second meetings in the year. So with that, it has been an interesting year. It's a joy working with all of you, and just personally and professionally, I want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thanks for all your individual time and commitment and your contributions in so many ways. Thank you. We'll go on to council member updates. Councilmember Blair?
I got nothing.
Councilmember Carmody?
Nothing.
Councilmember Curry?
I was at the Southeast Thurston Fire Authority meeting. It was a little bit longer. They were redoing more parts on their protocol manual and working on the levy lift they're going to run next year. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Stillwell?
I have no report.
Councilmember Wood?
No report.
Councilmember DePinto?
Yeah, and I apologize again for not understanding the order correctly. I thought it was an amendment, not a not the final passage for that budget. So I do apologize for that. I'm sure you are correct, Mayor, and the procedure and all that that happened. I was simply confused. I did want to say, though, before that, I, I thought I was going to have a chance to speak on the budget, but I really did appreciate Councilmember Carmody's comments. And I also wanted to thank the Finance Committee and the Finance Director in the department for all their hard work countless hours on that budget. I know, you know, I was on the Finance Committee for, and I know all the hours that the department and the council members put into it. So thank you. And Councilmember Carmody especially, I could tell you put a lot of thought into what you, you read there. So thank you very much. I wasn't, I didn't think it was a bad budget. I think, you know, it's passed, and I think Yelm's going to do, get through the next biennial budget just fine. The reason I was going to be voting against that, and hopefully my vote got, was able to be changed, but it was just a lack of prioritization to police. And that was it. Other than that, Merry Christmas. Go Hawks.
Councilmember Kaminsky?
I just wanted to thank James and Joe for working on that proclamation. It was a lot of work. Thank you very much for doing that. And to the Finance Committee, we have three official weeks off, so enjoy it. And I hope we get to see each other in person next year.
Very good. And to tie it up, first, I want to read a comment from the attendees, although she didn't want to speak to the council out loud. She did write, "I have something to say. I do not have a camera." "Thank you, Mayor Foster, and Yelm council members. I am certainly a proud citizen of Yelm." Thank you, Debbie Furman. Appreciate you being there. And with all that's happened in Yelm in the last year, it would take a really long time to sum it all up. I'll let the NVN try to do that in their year-end summary. But I'm looking forward to a new year where we can all have our hands on this bright future together. I think it has a lot of promise. So thank you, counsel. Thank you, staff, for working through an incredibly challenging year and getting us to this point. We will say, and Michael will back me up on this one, we talked to our sister cities in the area, and we hear that cities like Olympia and Lacey are having $2 million hits to their budget because of these issues. We feel like we're fairly fortunate to be not hit as badly, although we certainly have felt the effects out here. And mostly, we, our thoughts go out to those who are in our Yelm City family, who have become ill through this, and we wish everybody a speedy recovery, and we'll look forward to seeing you all in '21. With that, we're going to turn for a while. There we go. Joe got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays, everyone.